As you're going to school. I'm sure about the movie though. I had that transfer from there.
Yes.
But I can recognize. It's really. And actually. Just have to. I had one. For this is what's.
Yeah. I didn't think of that. Oh, exactly.
Richard, this is your job.
I don't know. What is? Okay. Twice. For Greg. You're in the car with these. You don't think so. To get on. Yes. Well, I haven't joined it back soon. I'll join it soon. Yeah, if you wouldn't. Ryan. Newton time.
Right.
Yeah. We don't. It's been an issue for how many years? You know. When we bought our house.
Right? I know. I just.
That's what we're trying to do. Just. Playing transparent. So it's just changing.
Finally, you must have. Yeah.
I'm gonna say you off the stage. That's much of my flat tireless.
Oh.
So we had to build. A whole ground.
No, it was actually a big screw. Yeah.
It's.
All which is. The hell women would anyway.
Yeah. So we thought it. Which Michael seven. And then. Three one. All. You showed them.
I think you don't need.
So we used to. Yeah. So. Take a rest. And then stay. Around.
How is that bad?
Let me just check. Um. Richard. Are you all set C A T D?
Yes.
Okay. And we are running, we are live now. Okay, thank you very much. Tom, were you able to see if.
I realize that it's going through my wrong account.
So I can switch to. It's a board will indulge us for just one minute. I'm actually gonna check and see if Lisa Christie was gonna join through Zoom. Or Lisa, actually, if you're there, if you could just let us know you're there, because I'm not logged into Zoom right now to know. And Jamie as well. Richard, do you have the ability to flip folks between panelists and sort of regular attendee?
Yes.
And can you see if there's a Lisa Christie or a Jamie T?
Jamie's Jamie's.
Hi, Neil.
Hello, Jamie.
Yeah, I'm here and Tom's here, Neil.
Okay, well, Tom's also here too, so.
Wow.
Got time everywhere. It's a good thing. All right. Second. All right. And I just.
Audio is difficult for viewers to hear. That's what you're hearing from this.
Jamie, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I can.
Okay, thanks, Jamie. All right, so with that, I am going to get things rolling this evening. And before we jump right into the agenda with the board's indulgence, I want to add two items to the very beginning of our meeting tonight. First is recognition of our brand new board members. And the second is a huge thank you to Kelly McConnell, our departing board member. So if board members are okay with that, I see. Not a heads and a raising of thumbs. Let me start by welcoming our two newest board members from the Hanover side of the river. Kevin Knutti and Deborah Bacon Nelson. If you guys just want to briefly introduce yourselves, I mean, I know you know the Hanover folks already. You've met probably the north. But for everyone that's here and watching from home, if you just want to briefly introduce yourselves, that'd be great.
Kevin Knutti, I live in Patna. I've been here for about 11 years. I'm retired from the military and also from Crow. I have a seven year old in the second grade at our school.
I'm Deb Nelson, and I am also retired, not from the military, but from teaching high school English and American Studies at Lebanon High School next door. And I have two children who are 37 and 34, and they went kindergarten through 12th grade in the Hanover Dresden School District. And I spent the last weekend taking care of my 19 month old granddaughter. And that's just about the best thing that I can say. I go, thank you. I live in Hanover. And I have for about close to 40 years.
Great. Well, welcome both of you. I hope that they let you know when you join the Hannah Report that you got to join two other boards as well too. Hopefully, that did not come as a surprise to you. And then I also want to take a moment this evening and thank our outgoing board member, board, Justin Board Chair, no less. That's why you're seeing me sitting here this evening to fill in temporarily. Kelly McConnell and is the board has a tradition of resolutions for our departing board members. Although I don't see Kelly with us in person tonight, I will make sure that she gets a copy of this. But just wanted to read it off for folks. So Resolution of the Dresden School Board, September 28, 2021. Whereas one person can make a difference through service to one's community. And whereas Kelly McConnell served as a member in good standing of the Hanover SAU 70 and Dresden School Boards for over six years, serving from 2015 to 2021. And whereas Kelly McConnell during her term of office, served in multiple leadership positions, including Chair of both the Hanover and Dresden School Boards. And whereas Kelly McConnell guided the Dresden Board with compassion, kindness, and a true concern for our students and school community during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Kelly McConnell served on numerous committees for both Hanover and Dresden, including the budget, negotiations and evaluation committees. And whereas Kelly McConnell's passion for education and commitment to every learner, teacher and staff member was evident in every issue brought before the school boards. And whereas Kelly McConnell leaves the board to continue to serve the Hanover and Norwich school communities in another capacity by sharing her love of French language and culture through teaching the students of Hanover High. And whereas Dresden and Hanover schools not only maintained, but also in many respects improved upon their quality during Kelly McConnell's years of service as a board member in Hanover and Dresden. We, the undersigned, extend our heartfelt gratitude and deep appreciation for the difference Kelly McConnell made in the lives of students in Hanover, New Hampshire and Norwich, Vermont during her years of service and for many years to come. So just a thank you to Kelly McConnell. Well, if you're tuning in from home, you can get off the Zoom now and start grading the papers that you told I have to have done for tomorrow. Okay, so with those two.
Four docs. There's no join button. I was told not to do that.
Okay. Okay. I don't know that it makes a difference.
Sorry, I was just gonna say Lisa's now.
Okay. Richard, are you able to move Lisa Christie over as a panelist?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. With that, the then first item on the written agenda this evening is appointment of a chair. So as we noted, Kelly McConnell stepped down, she was our Dresden Chair, we need to appoint a new one. And so at this point in the evening, I will take nominations for Dresden Chair. Um.
And I made Rick Johnson.
All right. Nominations do not require a second. Are there any other nominations for Dresden Chair this evening? Seeing none, then, all those in favor of Rick Johnson as Chair of the Dresden Board? Oh, sorry, if Lisa is on, Lisa, are you on?
I am. I'm just trying to get set up. Sorry, guys. And but I, yes.
Okay, so unfortunately, though, with Lisa, I will need to do a roll call vote. And so I will start at the end with Deborah.
Nelson, yes.
Awesome, refuse.
Yeah.
Amy, yes. Yes.
Oh, yes.
Harmania. Percy, yes.
Candice, yes. Knutti, yes.
And Odell, yes. I'm gonna call that unanimous, right? Welcome to the new rule of Chair of the Dresden School Board, and I will let you take over from here.
Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you, everyone. At this point, we're gonna appoint a secretary. Do you have any nominations for Secretary for the Dresden School Board? Yep.
I nominate Kevin Knutti as Secretary.
Do you have any other nomination? It's one of the new, it's one of the new guy jobs. I think you're replacing Brittany, right?
Yes.
Do we have any other nominations? So going around, done?
Nelson, yes.
Yeah, Odell, yes.
He was, yeah.
Kiwi, yes. Doc, yes.
Johnson, yes?
Paul, yes.
Hartman, yes. Percy, yes.
Candice, yes.
Give it. You can, you can vote for yourself. So you can make it. Okay. And Lisa, what's that?
We can explain it too.
Yeah.
Lisa, yes.
Great.
Really what the secretary mostly does is we issue a bond, they'll need to have some documents that you decide in addition to the board chair. So it's only for some of those higher level types of legal documents to me heavily, because we have a minutes taker. So you don't need to do.
I took minutes on my first meeting when they voted me in. See now, it was on his. I took. No change. And you would need the chair if the chair and the vice chair are both absent from the meeting.
Yeah, Neil.
You're in the Alexander Haig role.
Great. Yes.
Yes.
Great. Agenda review. I know we added two items. And Kim recommended we also talk about committee assignments. So at the Hanover Board, two weeks ago, I asked the new members to let me know their interests. I will send out, there's a Excel spreadsheet, and you'll see the the open spots that Brittany and Kelly left, but if you have a burning desire to serve on something that's already filled, let me know. So I'll send that out this week. The board, the the big one that we need is budget, right, Kim?
Yes.
So. So we're right now in the budget season. Would it make sense for me to take Dresden now when someone did Hanover? Okay. We'll coordinate that. John.
We, at the Hanover meeting, I brought up, should we add into the agenda review, different approvers on the financials? And we never got to that. I would like to bring that to light again tonight.
Okay, we will add that to discussion. Or actually just action.
Let's move it right into action.
Right, move it back. Okay. Um. This point, the public may address the board, probably has three minutes each to comment on items on the agenda. The board respectfully requests members of the public to state their name and address before commenting on agenda topics. Do we have anyone here in person? Anyone on the Zoom call?
Ricky, do you? Kate.
Kate's gonna, could you move? We'll let this gentleman speak first, and then we'll move over to Kate.
This gentleman is named Stu Richards from Norwich. I have a couple of grandchildren in the system. And I had a couple of questions, if it's appropriate to ask questions during public comment, is that okay?
Well, it's actually, you're supposed to make comments. If you want to ask a question, we'll rule on whether we feel like it's appropriate to answer at this time.
So recently. Greg Magnato sent out a a policy. And I'm just wondering if that policy is current and in effect in Hanover as well? And if so, whether parents were notified of the of the policy. The policy, if you recall, I'm not sure if people had seen it or not. Stated that parents may or may not be informed of certain actions that the school might take. It related to pronouns. And there was a third, third. So.
And who set this up?
This was sent out by Greg Magnato.
He's our coordinator of student services at very across. Also, it wouldn't be relevant necessarily, but it's. Question is whether or not it's gonna be district wide, I'm sure.
I'm not aware of it. I'll chat. Oh, we'll get your response in the next week or so, once Jay figures out.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
So the the second question really is from Tom, and I don't know, this is kind of on the agenda. And I don't know, it's more appropriate to wait until it comes up on the agenda?
Uh, it's with regards to.
Uh, with regards to sewer testing, very across sewer.
What, if you could, if you wanted to wait until Jamie gives her presentation?
Sure.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Kate? Kate, would you have a comment? Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none? Sorry.
My name is Jim Lyric, I'm a Hanover resident, and I've been in the school district for the ninth year now. I have three kids, one in the middle school, an eighth grader, I have a fifth grader and a third grader. And I just wanted to tell the board, which you all, I'm sure, know that uh, I think our administrators and our teachers are doing a fantastic job. My kids are having a wonderful time, a wonderful experience at the schools here. They feel loved, they're being smarter. And so I just want to thank the administrators, thank the principals, thank the teachers. It's not an easy job, as I'm watching the board meetings, I understand that. And it definitely hasn't been an easy job over the past 18 months, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Kate has her hand back up.
Kate?
I can't move back, I can just Richard. Richard, are you, Kate Hilton, are you able to give people the ability to speak down soon?
Yes. Who is, I'm sorry.
Kate Hilton has her.
Okay. Sorry.
Kate, can you hear us?
Yeah. Okay.
Hi there, it's Kate Hilton. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we got you.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with Jim and also express my thanks to Lauren and to Nan, and to both of our children's second and fourth grade homeroom teachers, who have welcomed our family back from remote learning in particular. I also wanted to know that one of my children has an IEP, and the staff that have supported his transition back and his transitions in and out of the classroom have made his return to the race school enormously positive. And he's very excited about school, both of our kids are, which is a change for us, and that is a really wonderful thing to see. So I just wanted to give a special shout out to everybody that's been supporting our family. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Any other comments? Anything online?
No, but Anissa Morrison is in the attendees, should you pull her over or when we get to that point.
Hey, so moving on to our new Hanover High School council rep.
Hi, I'm Kate McCall. Our council is picking back up again, we're planning a way to celebrate the fifty years of councils, this is kind of the fiftieth anniversary. We are still in the process of deciding on a new mascot, we're hoping to have that done by the end of October, so within the next month. And, and we've mainly been dealing with little things like finances for the past month, and electing committee chairs and getting council started back up in person.
Thank you, Ben, so council meetings are on Wednesdays at eleven now?
Yeah.
In the auditorium?
Yes.
So I've been the council rep for the school board, and that'll be one of the positions that will probably get freed up just because now I'm the, as the chair, so. Yeah, I've, the last two years as the rep, I've absolutely enjoyed it, so I highly recommend someone volunteer to do it. There's a lot of energy, they know how to run a meeting, they're done in forty-five minutes. They're my heroes. Thank you, okay, moving on to Hanover High School principal.
I was just doing a quick report, you have what I wrote, I don't, so first one I've written, so if it's not how you want it, just let me know. Mainly, we're hoping to have a live open house in the spring. We did not escape the social media trend, so at least we know we fit right in with the rest of America, even though sometimes we feel like we're super special, we are vulnerable to such trends. But we're working on a lot of stuff, decision-making committee, equity PD, evaluation committee, credit recovery program, teachers are working hard. And it's really fun having an intern, letting you know that we have four other, four people, including the interns, who are pursuing their administrative certification on our staff, so I find that to be really exciting, too. And we hope the tech update was helpful, just so you know some of the positives and some of the struggles, so that nothing comes as a surprise when we start talking about them during the budget season.
Thank you. Any questions?
All right, I will try to keep it short as well. Welcome to the new chair, to the new board members, we always extend, we like to extend an invitation to come visit RMS anytime you want. Although lunchtime is a fairly popular time, if you wanna come over and partake in some of Austin's food. I jinxed myself when I wrote this, saying that we were fully staffed, we're still one short, but we're getting there. We managed to fill a bunch of long-term subpositions that have come available through people in the building. That's one of the things we learned last year in COVID, was to sort of juggle as many people in the building as we could. Yeah, and we have a lot of new folks who are, are melding in quite well, we have a large number for this district of new teachers this year. All of whom have been amazing so far. Some highlights of this month, very quickly, our library is open. Again, we're doing sort of a series of soft openings with the library as we get new stuff, but the students are in there. Once we get our new makerspace furniture, we're gonna invite everybody over for a big, big huge opening, shout out to Cuttings Cafe, who provided the sandwiches for the guys who put together all of the shelving, which was a two-day job, probably through. This year is an outgrowth of our equity work, last year, we tried to work, we decided as a staff to try to work to normalize the use of pronouns in the school, so we made it available to everyone to have that some, be something that they could divulge. So we put it out to staff, we put it out during our registration process, Shannon did a really great job of putting it in power school. And then we had the students, if they wanted to as well, so we have about ninety percent of the people in the building have decided that they want to share something, we're valuing and honoring everybody. So if you choose not to share anything, that's a great choice, too. So we feel like we're moving in the right direction, making this school a welcoming place for us. Thursday was our first ever gumbo feast. We had some students approach me, knowing that I'd lived in South Louisiana for fifteen years after hurricane Ida hit, saying they wanted to do something. Austin loves cooking southern food, he said he cooked gumbo, so we sold some gumbo, raised about five thousand dollars. I'm gonna send it to a friend of mine down there, runs a nonprofit. And that's about it, oh, we are gonna build on our open house of last year and do it as a virtual open house, thinking that we're gonna focus mostly on curriculum. That's something that gets rid of a lot of the equity issues that come up with having to come to school on a particular night. We're gonna try to come up with other ways to get the teachers and the parents to meet in person, because we also know that's important. That's it.
Great, any questions for Tim? Scott?
Mr. Boyle, this is on, comes from my love of supporting nonprofits, but also my love of gumbo, will you be doing another round?
We may, in the spring.
Will we make sure that we are inviting everyone?
Yes. It was out, I, I tried to put it out as widely as possible, I do. So Austin made a bunch of gum, he was there, I, this is one of the fun things you have to do, so we had to call HPD because he stayed overnight to make sure that he could cook enough gumbo. So it was Thursday night, and he's like, well, I'm gonna cook all this gumbo, and then it'll be great, because I'll just use whatever's left, it stays for lunch on Friday. Well, we sold that. So then he had to stay Friday night, or Thursday night to make more gumbo for lunch on Friday, so next time it's on the menu, though, I will definitely let you.
Can we put an order in for crawfish at Tuesday?
We're gonna try for a giant, I keep saying we should do a giant crawfish boil in the spring, so we'll see if we can, if COVID will allow us to.
All in favor.
We had to special order the oat broth. Austin had to order the oat broth from Austin.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Tim.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to business requiring discussion, so Jamie? This is about the Dresden field.
Shared it off, and I'm sorry I'm not showing video, it's because I don't have a lot of bandwidth here. I'm on watch duty for my very elderly family members, so I'm broadcasting here from Newport, New Hampshire in my RV, and I don't have a lot of bandwidth. So I'll kick this off by saying that in our quest to find potential appropriate places to cite a Marion Cross School wastewater facility, we decided to look at some test pits on the Dresden recreational fields property in Norwich. So we had not yet shared the results of that with the Dresden School Board, which is the Norwich School District's, one of their sister, if you will, sister districts, so we're doing that tonight with this report. I will, I will also say that we looked at a couple of spots, a few spots on a property, a private property that was adjacent to the Dresden Fields property, that information is not being shared, as it is private to that landowner. And we didn't pay anything in order to do that, so that's all been redacted from the report. The results are good. We're bringing this to the Dresden School Board with the full knowledge that the Hanover School Board members have not been entrenched in all of the details over the last two to three years that we've been working through. And prior to conversations about next steps, it would be our intent to put all of that information together and share it for all of our Hanover resident Dresden School Board members, so that they could have more depth and background knowledge on what's been going on with this issue, that is a Norwich School District issue. So, but tonight, we'd to just do a really high overview of what has occurred on the Dresden property and share the result of the report with you, before we share it out at a Norwich School Board meeting, as the property belongs to this district. I think that's it, and I'm sure Tom has more to add.
Tom, do you have anything to add?
Well, I think Jamie covered it well, obviously, we've been looking at this issue for a long time, so we're happy to bring onboard our Hanover colleagues to learn more about race water distribution on the north side of the river, and I'd be happy to provide any background information on that as necessary. But we'll keep moving ahead on this, and would welcome your comments and consideration if we do decide that this is a feasible direction to go to. As that's always one of the blows.
So I've got two questions. What are the next steps, that you're gonna take us to Norwich, and then what's the next step after that?
So we're gonna take it to Norwich, we've got, we are meeting with our engineer to Jeff Goodrich, who's referenced in here, as well as Tony Dable. There is also some ongoing wastewater studies that have been started, or, I'm sorry, I'm not sure of exact timeline with the Norwich Select Board and their planning commission, so we would also want to understand what their next steps are there as well.
And if a decision was made, will this impact the playing field, are they no longer available for athletics, or?
No, that's, that certainly wouldn't be the intention there at all. No, it would not.
Any questions or comments before I ask Mr. Richards?
I would jump in there to say that if you look at the map that's attached on page six, the locations that were tested are way up behind on the hilly section of area up above the baseball field, and up above the soccer field and adjacent to the right of the, where the new softball field is sited. So it really is a section of land, very hilly, I've walked it, which probably would not be suitable to put playing fields on without a lot of excavation work, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Richards?
Stu Richards, one more time from Norwich, so as Tom has mentioned, and others have mentioned, this has been going on for several years. And it's certainly not an easy, an easy issue to deal with. My, my concern is that we've had, glad to be corrected if I'm misstating this, but as far as I know, there's really only a couple of properties that have been tested, really tested, Paish and, and Dresden. And my concern here is that if it doesn't work out for Dresden, what's our fallback? Because if we haven't done testing on other properties, we don't have a plan B or a plan C, or whatever the, however you want to term it. So I guess my question really is, what's, what is plan B or C if this doesn't work out? Is there more testing that's gonna be done on other properties, or are there other properties that have been tested so far that, that the public's not aware of? Apart from the private one?
Yeah, not, not that the public have not been there aware of, other than the private property, the, but yeah, I mean, we'll have to see if this one's feasible, if it's feasible from a town and school board perspective, and if it's not, then we'll have to figure out another option, as you know. Well, too, that we looked at three options from the beginning, one was the Hartford wastewater connection, which was ruled out by Hartford, and, and then of course, there's a replacement where the school property currently is on the green again, but as far as our testing has gone there, that does not seem desirable at all. And you've read the reports with the way that it just keeps everything on top of the surface freezing there, like a ice rink across the whole thing, so. We'll just have to move on to another option if this one isn't feasible, and we'll conduct the testing as necessary.
Yeah, the further concern is that, you know, test really needs to be or should be done in the month of May, so, you know, we'll be through another cycle of, you know, trucking, trucking the waste away, if this doesn't work out, and I, you know, I certainly don't know, and maybe you do, I don't know whether this will be reviewed favorably by those folks who have to view it favorably. So there is, if you read the report from Pathways, Jeff Goodrich, there is very good septic capability on the Dresden field, now how that would, how that would figure into Dresden's long-term plan? When I proposed some affordable housing a couple of years ago, I was told that, that there was not a long-term plan that was in existence so that affordable housing could fit in and be built on Dresden. So, and, and I don't know whether there is a long-term plan now, or whether there needs to be to, to accommodate this, maybe you do.
Well, I, I wanna speak out of turn for Jay, here we are embarking on a strategic plan this year, one of the subcommittees of that plan will be considering facilities and grounds, so. I would think that, if I'm speaking out of turn, Jay, let me know, I would think that would be part of the consideration of facilities and grounds strategic plan, as to whether or not Dresden feels that is a good location for it.
I got my fingers crossed that Dresden works out for everybody, and that it fits into the long-term plan, and that, that Marion Cross can go forward and solve the problem. So, and thanks for doing it, because it's, it's been an arduous task over a long period of time.
It is. But thanks is a new means to everyone else's.
Well, I mean, you got Jamie.
Yes. Yep, Tony.
Yes. Thanks very much.
Thank you. So Jamie, on to you now for the Dresden, oh, sorry, Kim.
Just, I, I know there's a lot of next steps, and a lot of it has to do with Norwich. So I, as the Hanover member, I don't necessarily want to get into something that I don't need to at a certain point in time. But I just think if, if this does come as a topic for discussion at the next, whenever that next is in Dresden, I would really appreciate it, I think Jamie mentioned it, like either a PowerPoint slideshow or whatever, to give a full overview of what's been done and going through, just because I, I am aware, because I've watched, you know, meetings, but I haven't been through all of, all of the pain. Not all of the meetings, certainly, so I just think that that'd be helpful for everyone on the east Dresden to kind of know what's going on.
Yes, and it would be obviously valuable moving ahead when it needs to be a larger public decision, too, so, but that's a good point, too, Kim, there is a webpage that's set up on the S A seventy website, where we have, it's not what you're asking for, but we have been posting reports, so if anyone who's watching now is interested, that those are posted on the, on the website, and this one will be after the season's meeting as well.
Moving on to tuition update, Katie?
Good evening again, as we normally do at this time of year, we take a look at the tuition projections and where we're at with the students who have matriculated on site to participate in our educational programming. This is an early report, we usually use, you know, for formality, October one numbers, but as many of you know, our tuition students come and go. It's, it's not unusual for new ones to come in, or ones we have on site to move direction. So I, I will just say it's, you know, it's a snapshot in time, right? So I did the overview, so you could see what was going on, on the report. We initially projected a hundred and, I think, I believe, a hundred and thirty-nine total. We're sitting at a hundred We're sitting at a hundred and thirty-four. That being said, please note that that hundred and thirty-four are not full-time F T Es, meaning full-time equivalencies. The students are not onsite full-time. So some of the billings, as when you look at line, there are sixty-four full-time kiddos. There are six part-time because they go part-time to the VOTEC. So we only bill them for half of the time that they're with us and they pay the VOTEC directly. And then they'll have one student who's partaking in one class with, so that's prorated. This, also, we have that occurring in Heartland. Obviously, Heartland is a Vermont school district. And so the Vermont school districts pay less than the New Hampshire school districts to go to a Vermont vocational center. So it, it makes sense for all of those folks. They pay the vocational centers directly as well. So at the end of the day, you can see how it all breaks down at the bottom, actual totals at nine-one. Parents, state and out-of-state. I've shown what the budgeted amounts were, so you can see where the variances are. In-state variances are the highest with out-of-state variances to follow. Right now, based on the project, our current revenue variance is that we would be short here about two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And we had this phenomenon occur last year. It was actually much higher numbers. And we ended the year okay. So at this point in time with this early projection, you know, I know the question will be, are you concerned that we're not going to be okay? I'm not concerned that we won't be okay. When I run the quarterlies for you, which will be reported at the October meeting, while it will be very early because we will have only about a month's worth of operational monies for programming. I will give you, I always give you a projection of what I think the year will look like. So we'll, we'll address that a little bit more at that point in time, okay? And then I'm just giving you an overview of what's going on with the Richmond Middle School sixth graders. This will be the last year, this is the last year that the tuition arrangement will be occurring. For the twenty-two, let's see, what year am I in? Twenty-two, twenty-three budget year, the sixth grade students from Hanover actually become a part of the Dresden School District. So the, the interplay of tuition monies back and forth between the districts will go away. And then the apportionment for, for the next budget that you're going to be taking will be adjusted accordingly. We projected seventy-nine students and we actually have onsite eighty-two. So there's a variance there of three students. And just as a side note, normally, we would bill Hanover for the three additional students the next year out. I really need to contact legal because I don't know that we will do that next year because the tuition arrangement will be going away. So I'll have to follow up on that, okay?
That was a comment.
Yeah, I, I don't think it should be a problem because those eighty-two actual students will be considered when we look at the A D M students, which are a lagging indicator when it comes in the relevant budget that it needs to. So those eighty-two students will get their own credit the way the rest of the year, right, Jamie? I mean, I know you need to.
Yeah, yeah. That's correct, Kim. So yeah, they would be picked up in the apportionment change. So that's probably, you know, that's probably good enough because the apportionment's obviously gonna swing harder to Hanover with this change, so.
So Jamie, why does Brownsville get an asterisk?
Brownsville has an asterisk because they will no longer be sending any students to us. I'm sorry, I should have put that on the paper there.
I was gonna say, are you tracking that article that was in the paper? I think it was Stratford that's considering becoming a sending district?
Yes, yep. And that was the other note. Absolutely. Thank you for mentioning that, Rick. I have it down here on my bottom of my paper. Yeah, that they'll be taking a vote in November to look at opening that up and not having share, is it Sharon Academy, I think? Is there, is there designated one now? Yes, so, so Jay was telling us about that. Thank you, Jay, for bringing that to light before it hit the paper. So that may be a really positive thing for us. And we'll keep, we'll keep an eye on that.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Jamie?
Is, is this Brownsville's last year, Jamie? Jamie, is this Brownsville's last year of eligibility?
I believe last year was, Tom.
So, I mean, the current year we're in, or this? Yeah, so the current year we're in, right?
Yes, the current year we're in.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
The, the Brownsville five, are they all seniors? Or are they gonna get stuck? And may, I mean, what's gonna happen with them if they're not seniors?
No, they will follow through the rest of their Dresden career here. They, they don't pull them back. They allow them to finish, but they won't be adding any more new students to our enrollment numbers.
Thank you.
And no, they're not all seniors. I don't have, I can look up and I'll text you the breakdown. I don't have it on my, on my initial paperwork here.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, moving on to the budget guidelines and timeline, is this Tim or Jamie or Kevin?
Sure, I mean, I, I think I can do it since I don't know how the reception is in the R V for Jamie. But and actually, this is the second time most of the board has been seeing it. I know we have two new board members. But we presented that last month. We, the Budget Committee presented our recommendations, which is these draft guidelines that you see attached here as our recommendations for what a budget cap or corridor would be to give administration some sort of guidelines for how to build a draft budget that we will kind of first take a look at. It's our experience, it's a little bit easier to have a number than to say, you know, build it and then let's discuss. And so I think what we tried to do at first is look at kind of a status quo, which is what that quick model is, the Q M document. And that just is trying to say, what did we take last year's budget and roll forward what we know is going to occur this year? Those are kind of things like, you know, if contracts are updated, obviously, we're locked into a multi-year thing. We'll update those accordingly. But, you know, it's clearly not an attempt to create the budget. So this is a, a cap. In Dresden's case, it's a targeted increase of two and a half percent or less over last year's approved budget. But as this budget process rolls out, we will see what we learn. And so we, it has been our practice to increase it or decrease it depending on, on certain either economic or school operations. So I kind of presented it last time, so if there are any questions, happy to answer them. But I believe we are now ready to talk about this for approval at this.
Yep. Anyone have any questions or comments for Kevin or Jamie?
So I know we keep talking about the long-range plan and whatnot, and it kind of is a new board member. How is some of that? I hear stuff like the track, you know, some of these things that need to be done. And I'm just kind of thinking like, it's a long, like, the long-term plan's probably gonna take a while to develop. And it sounds like, things like the track aren't, I, I hear there's like roots growing in, and there's, she's a pretty significant issue. So I guess some questions is how are we thinking about kind of some of these big capitalist expenditures and?
Yeah, so a couple of things. So one specifically on the track, which was talked about at the last meeting. And actually, if I were to, you know, recommend a slight edit, right? I might add in the strategic initiative section, maybe a bullet point for track. Because I think that that was something that was discussed and might have a need. And actually, before this meeting, I went out to look at the track and it is very green on that far side, which is, you know, we just want to make sure that things are settled there. So that was discussed. So that may be one of the things that if we don't do something now that is a fix, you know, that is a deep one. And again, that's maybe, we'll, we'll talk about it as this budget develops. I think some of the up, like, if you're talking about long range, so in a couple of years from now, what, Jamie, two or three? I always forget what you're aiming.
Two.
From the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three budget, a very, you know, the large Dresden debt will be rolling off. And so we'll have some substantial bandwidth to kind of expenditures. So I think there's been kind of a continuing question in Budget Committee of, is, is this the year to do it before debt rolls off? Or is, do we, should it be later? Or should we develop a bigger plan for kind of to move that expenditure? So part of the strategic plan, I know we want to wrap that up into, but then obviously, if there are some emergency fixes that need to happen, then they need to happen. And we'll bring that as the budget develops.
And for the edification of our new members, you may want to talk about the limitations that we have under New Hampshire law with regards to creating a fund to handle capital expenditures.
Are you talking about reserve funds?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, we can't do that in Dresden. So because of our interstate district, we have been advised by legal counsel that we cannot have reserve funds like we do in our elementary schools, at our towns, like anywhere else. And so the really only lever that we have is our retainage that we typically fund the amount that we have received voter approval to, which is two and a half percent of our budget on the New Hampshire apportionment side because we can't do it in Vermont. So that's kind of our, our reserve fund that we can tap into if, if we need to have large expenditures in our roof flaps or whatever, we can tap into some other funds as well. But that's kind of our emergency fund, I guess, if you want to call it that for.
You have reserve funds in the town. Can you change that agreement? So it seems like it's a very large handicap town.
So could I jump in? Okay, so thank you, Kim. That's very accurate. Garrett, the problem for reserve funds is that the Department of Justice, which oversees trust in the state of New Hampshire, will not allow towns to hold monies that belong to another state. So I, I will share with everybody the rights done when this was looked at. Oh, God, it was a long time. It was quite a while ago, six, fifteen years ago, maybe sixteen. But that's the crux of the issue. It also specifically states it in the interstate agreement. So we would have to get that changed as well if we could petition one of the states to hold the monies for us. So that, that's part of it. Thing that I'm just gonna say here is that, and this was actually discussed at the Dresden administrative meetings when we met. Items of a capital nature, you know, usually, I would say, you know, in excess of contracts that are going to be in excess of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, considered larger projects, are most, are usually put out on a separate warrant article. So they wouldn't be included in the budget part of the bill that we're talking about, which is considered the general fund part of the budget. So just keep that in mind too. So usually, those items go out on separate warrant article and usually larger items are bond issue. Thank you.
Of the commissioner. So it would have to be really an emergency situation. They were more lenient last year because of COVID. They considered that an emergency. So, so that's, that's really, that doesn't really equate to a capital reserve account.
Thank you.
Sorry, just on the, I, I missed the Dresden meeting last time because I went to click on the Zoom thing when the meeting was happening and there wasn't Zoom. So is it really true that we, that all these have to be in person here now, all, all these committee meetings? Because coming down the school board since COVID started, it was awfully nice just to be in your office and be able to jump into these meetings.
So you, so the quorum has to be in person. So that's why, like, Lisa is on the call, but she doesn't account towards our core.
Okay. And then for these committee meetings, I was like, really a pain to set up like a Zoom thing or is that, I mean, at that age, should we all? Because for some of us that have to come in, it's like a two-hour round trip, right, to actually attend a meeting. So it's just.
Where do you live?
Well, I mean, half an hour in, half an hour out, right? And an hour for the meeting. It's like, it's like two hours out of your day to do one of these meetings, which is not like something that a lot of us have a lot of time for this type of thing, right? So that's my point. Like, if you want us to participate in these things, don't, right, that's not ever relevant, right? Like, I'm trying to make it easier to participate in these committees rather than having to have every single one of them in person, right? Like.
We have your law, right? We've been mandated that all public meetings be held back in public and not on Zoom unless you request an individual, but the, the meeting itself has to be held in person in all committee meetings.
You can certainly have individuals who can't make it for a certain, certainly to participate by phone.
Yeah, I've called in a couple times. Okay, moving on to business requiring action, we added in the you know, update or?
If you refresh, I added new approvers for the manifest as I don't have.
So would someone like to make a motion like it's simple?
Can I get, just make, I, I think, I always, we only switched to Norwich a month ago. So this would just be for Dresden and Hanover.
To be the two Hanover reps that are approving right now. Marcela, we're approving the
Dresden and Hanover.
So moving on to business requiring action, would someone like to make a motion?
Move to approve items B, C, D, and E by consent.
Nelson, yes.
Neil. Odell, yes.
Yes, yes.
Ken.
He, yes.
Ron.
But yes.
Johnson, yes. Oh, yes.
Hartman, yes.
Candace.
Kristy, yes.
Great, thank you.
Rick, could I jump in? This is Jamie.
Hello, Jamie.
Sorry, I know you see my hand. I apologize. I just want to point out for the new folks joining us, and even for the old folks already still there, not meaning old, old, just meaning experienced board members. How's that? Under the approval of expenditure, also tonight added the A P payroll overview for voucher processing. So people could refresh their memory or read about, you know, how it works and how it, how to read the information. That's been posted there. I did it earlier tonight.
Where did you add that?
Thank you. Where, under the approval of expenditures?
That is, okay, so Marcela and John have been doing the approvals for Hanover for how many months?
Eternity.
So would I like, uh, two Hanover people to volunteer to approve? People look for the, how long we usually do it, three months, six months? Court, we do it quarterly, so we'll try to get back on schedule, so. Deb, thank you. Kevin?
What is it specifically?
So basically, when they do the payroll, they do the budgets, they send it to you to just renew. Uh, actually, that document that Jamie posted in, uh, seven or six B?
Yes.
Kind of talks about the process.
Okay.
Okay, so we got Deb and Kevin will be, uh, approving the financial documents for the next three months and then we'll reassign. Thank you.
Yes, and Jamie, you give them a quick tutorial, right?
Yeah, so I would ask them to just make, uh, do together or separate, doesn't matter. Um, come in and meet with me and I'll go over it, uh, with you on any, you know, tips or tricks and things to look for. Um, and it will only take like, you know, twenty minutes, half hour, and I can answer any other questions you might have about, you know, what goes on maybe with budget and all the other stuff. So happy to meet with you.
Thank you, Jim.
I just want also, Jamie, I, I did print off the, the DOE twenty-five and, uh, cover page. So I just want to make sure all the Dresden board members sign this before you leave tonight.
What are we signing though?
So.
Jamie, over the annual financial report information?
I will, and I, it's down under my, uh, reports, it's under seventy.
Yeah, let's go through the reports and then we'll, you can talk about it and then we can pass this around for signature. Great, uh, so reporting the chair, thank you everyone for, uh, voting for me, it's quite an honor. Very excited to serve. Um, I don't have anything really to report at this time, I will send out the committee assignments. And, uh, I actually sent it out to everyone in Dresden, so if anyone wants to try something new, let me know. Committee reports, uh, evaluation committee. Someone got anything to report about?
Sure, I, I can, we're, uh, we're in the, the final stages of preparing recommendations for the board and for the HEA. Uh, we have, um, actually already begun doing some training with the administrative team on the underlying framework that we've chosen, um, together, HEA and, um, and the administration have, and the board, my represent, representatives picked the Charlotte Danielson model for, um, enhancing teacher practice, and that's going to be the sort of undergirding for our evaluation supervision model. Uh, we've already actually had our colleagues in Norwich who've been training on that model for, since last spring. And our administration here went through training, uh, a little over a week ago on the, actually the thirteenth. And have had a second follow-up training on October first. And then we'll begin doing more work with the, the overall staff with the intent of having a new supervision and evaluation model ready to start up next school year.
So this will be standardized across the three districts or was just?
Even across the river, so.
Great, thank you. Uh, Dresden Athletic Advisory Committee.
Thanks, Rick. Um, so we met last week as a committee, um, the first thing we discussed was Megan gave us a report on fall sports and how sports have gone. We have had three hundred student athletes comprising nineteen fall teams, um, two teams in two different divisions, which means they're interfacing with a total of sixty-one different districts. Um, most of the teams have been running really smoothly, um, the golf team had some struggles with two of their three home matches. As a result of not having a course, so that, that they battled through, volleyball team is one of the few teams in the division that requires masks, um, because it's indoors. Um, visiting teams have been largely respectful of that rule, biggest challenge this fall has been statewide buses, um, as we know, um, and a referee shortage. And yet, the next thing, uh, we, we were lucky enough to have, um, Zane Schiffman and Sophie Wise from the council join us. Um, they've put in a request to have a member of council, um, join our committee, and our committee felt that was really, really a good idea. Um, just in the short time that they were with us in their proposal, they gave us a really good, um, kind of perspective on the mind of, of a student. Um, because much, many of us have been away from it for so long. Um, so we, the next steps would be, uh, council is going to take a vote on who they're going to select to join us, and then I will update the board. And the last thing was the winter sports plan, um, Megan shared that the winter sports season should run as scheduled. Winter track would be the exception, uh, because, uh, like last year, most of the winter track events are hosted at colleges and most colleges close their campuses to outside groups. Um, we are anticipating that might be an issue this year, hopefully not, but possibly. Um, and there are currently, as of last Thursday, currently four open assistant coaching positions, uh, for winter sports teams. So if you are an Alpine skiing coach, Nordic skiing coach, a boys' basketball coach, or a boys' hockey coach, um, please reach out to Megan Sobel as soon as possible. Our next meeting is Thursday, October fourteenth, eleven AM, and we have shifted from RMS back to Hanover High School. Um, so we can make sure our students that are joining us are not missing as much class time.
Thank you, John. And Jay.
All right, well, um, I already preempted part of my report because I wanted to share the, um, fun news about the Danielson training. I, I do want to say that the work that we're doing now at the evaluation committee is really sort of synchronizing backwards. So rather than having a strategic plan that drives all this, we have a number of committees in the meeting on somewhat related matters that will come together in the strategic plan, so, um, Robin has been leading, I don't want to steal her thunder for her report, but she's been doing a lot of curriculum work, uh, going back to the summer, actually before that even in the spring. Uh, that work has to be done, we've identified that years ago and it's well underway. Uh, we also at the same time have the, the supervision evaluation committee that has adopted the Danielson framework, which again is going to have a direct impact on the work that we do in curriculum, because it's going to be the organizing principle that we work from. And then ultimately, the work of the evaluation committee is going to manifest in the form of recommendations for policy changes to policy GCOE, GCOR, GCO, and all the other, um, policies that, that are tied into our evaluation supervision model as well as our staff development master plan that is due for renewal next year. So we'll be working on that as well, and it will all tie together, which is, is nice for a change. We're spending a lot more time talking about education than about, um, other matters. So, um, it's a relief, it's good work, and something we've been chomping at the bit to get at for years now. Um, the other thing I want to do is echo the, the welcomes to both Deb and Kevin. I, I, I say this often, I hope, or at least at a reasonable frequency, that I'm in awe of the time, effort, and, and really the, the knowledge that our board members bring to this endeavor. Um, I, I don't know that everybody fully realizes how much time they're committing when they volunteer and run. But, uh, you, you, you will learn that, that it is substantial, and it's greatly appreciated. So I just wanted to say that. And to everyone in the school community, we've really given the, given the uncertainty that we, we really wish we hadn't had to face. It's been a great start. And, uh, you know, we're all continuing to monitor what happens with the pandemic. And we continue to hope that the trends that we're seeing as it begins, seems to be at least ebbing again, uh, continues. And that, uh, you know, one day, all this, this preparation for fighting off a, a scary disease is gone and we can, we can focus one hundred percent on, on teaching and learning. But until that time, I'm, I'm again impressed by just how much everybody's worked together to make it happen, and, and deeply grateful. And that's my report.
I think, Robyn?
We had our pandemic task force meeting today, and we have some updates on vaccination rates. We continue to follow that in schools, and we've been very fortunate, we have very high rates amongst our seventh and eighth graders and staff, and then our high school students. So we continue to gather that data and look at that. We are, um, still gathering information from companies that do the surveillance testing through the SAS, through the New Hampshire program, and we've been looking at that. Um, the first company that we looked at did primarily testing, pool testing. So what we've talked about that, and, um, we are continuing to gather that information from other companies and continue to look at the data in New Hampshire and around the United States, and it has been more positive. Um, we may be plateauing hopefully in New England, but declining cases around the country, which is good news for us. I have been doing a lot of curriculum work, I can't believe every day that I go into a curriculum meeting that I can actually focus on it for an entire day, it's incredible. So I've met with all the high school departments at this point, and we began our work last week with our curriculum release days. I started with first and second grade, and next week I will have my first meeting with the high school with social studies. But basically every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday now, I'm at the Howe Library. They allowed us to use one of their conference rooms, and that's where we've been doing a majority of our work. So we've already been having really great discussions about curriculum and instruction. And, um, we've had teams come together from both Mary and Cross and from Hanover. And next week, again, we'll be starting our work with our high school teachers, so a lot of excitement there.
Colin, so at the Hanover Board meeting, uh, completely still with new members or, or people interested, expressed interest. I think of the five people, every single one that's in the curriculum, so it's really strong, just in the community.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if, um, I appreciate all the work you're doing. I wonder if there's a plan in terms of a timeline for what your goals are, or anything like that, that can be public.
Yeah. That's for sure, and I've been thinking about a three to five year plan. Because initially, I think for the first few years, we're talking about documenting the curriculum, what's currently happening and looking at it in alignment with the standards, and then we'll begin to work more horizontally and vertically, K through twelve, to see that it's matching up, um, with each of the subject areas year by year. So it will not be a fast process, I've said that over and over to teachers and administrators that it takes time for us to do this. Um, it's hard work, but it, it will be definitely more a part of our strategic plan as well.
Kevin addressed, uh, most of my question from the curriculum side of things, but could you, could you actually give us the numbers of the vaccination rates here at the high school?
Yeah, I think we are around ninety percent right now, so, and that's with staff and students. We, we're still, we're still collecting the data for our freshman sophomores particularly, but, um, we've had very high numbers, in the middle school, we're around eighty-seven percent, eighty-nine, eighty-five percent for the two plus. But again, we have so many students that are turning twelve, so they're becoming eligible for the vaccine. So we have more, you know, increasing numbers. And then hopefully the, um, vaccine for children will be approved soon, and then we'll be able to move forward for that too.
Is there any thought, uh, given to actually hosting a clinic at the elementary schools for that?
Well, I have spoken with public health about that previously. Um, we may do one for vaccinations in the, um, as we move into the flu clinic season. We're trying to arrange for that, so, yeah, I will continue to talk to them about that. Before, they were trying to focus in other areas because we have such easy access to government, so.
Thank you.
But I keep pushing for it, so.
Thank you. Jamie?
Good evening again, so as you may not see, um, I hosted a New Hampshire DOE twenty-five extension approval letter. The New Hampshire DOE twenty-five and MS twenty-five, which goes to, and I'm sorry, the DOE stands for Department of Education. It's the annual report that's filed, which, uh, sends in all the information for, from the fiscal year that's just closed. And then the D, the, the MS twenty-five is sent to the Department of Revenue Administration. And that document is used to help set the tax rate along with the updates to our revenue projections. So we, we asked for and received an extension this year, these are normally due on September one. Um, there's been a lot of turnover, SAU seventy, including in my office, um, so I'm a little behind. Uh, not to mention that my family, uh, commit blew up. So I'm sharing a letter with you to show you that these are going to be due by Friday. Um, in an effort to secure most of our admin, uh, of our board members' signatures, so you don't all have to try to come in after the fact, I asked Jay to be able to take those documents to you tonight. And if it makes you feel comfortable, he can hold on to them, so I don't issue them with the reports until I share them with you. Um, but the hand port is near, you're done, Dresden report is in process, it will be done by the first, and I'll get them sent in. So at that point in time, I'll send them out to you, these are reports you see every year. Um, this was just an effort to try to save from having to run in and, uh, sign these later, later. Um, because you're all there tonight. The other thing, so that's about the DOE twenty-five and the MS twenty-five, uh, signature pages. Uh, the other things I just want to, um, update you on is that we are, have been very busy in the custodial realm. Uh, we, due to some needs, um, and not being able to fill all of the positions we had, we transitioned, uh, two of our team members from the Hanover School District into the Dresden School District to complete the teams for both the high school and the Richmond Middle School. Uh, so those folks have been acclimating, uh, to their new locations this past week, last week was the first week. Um, and we're trying an outsourcing, uh, for the Hanover School District. Um, the other things that are going on with us, um, I'm trying to think in all the different realms. The food service realm here at the Hanover High School has been short-staffed. Um, and they're very busy, the kids have been very busy, uh, purchasing, but they're, they're getting the job done. Um, they've been hiring some new folks, so to, so to hopefully have a full complement there. The Richmond Middle School is done in-house, uh, we were fortunate to hire, um, to fill a position there the day before school opened. So, uh, as Tim reported, um, they're rolling along nicely over there, everything is going smoothly. Uh, we are still working on projects at all the different schools. Uh, the technology project is probably furthest along at the high school with the phone systems, uh, being wrapped up here this week or two and all of the connections being done, I know Josh has been very busy with, uh, a lot of those crews. Um, what else is going on? Finances, as I mentioned, we're wrapping up all the fiscal years to report, uh, Norwich, which has already been done, that was done in, uh, August. Um, we're under audit, we're in the middle of four, all four audits right now. Uh, they should be back in, I think, the second week of October to start wrapping that up. Um, yeah, and we're starting to build new budgets, so we're in three years worth of budgets. We're closing one knee-deep in the middle of starting one and building a new one, so it's a busy time. Any questions?
Jamie, as the new chair, I note that I'm signing under pain of death.
Yeah, I know. You, you.
I leave on Thursday to go out of town, so I did sign, but could you make sure you don't release those documents until I get to see the document?
Absolutely, you have my word.
A short tenure.
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yeah.
It's Lisa.
Hi, Lisa.
Hi, I'm in Maine for work, and I don't get to leave until our project is done, which is either like Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday of next week. What should I do about my signature?
It's okay, as long as the bulk of signatures. So you're, you're okay, we'll send with, we'll send without it.
Okay.
I'm taking you down with me, Lisa.
Yeah, I promised I'd take you out if you became chair, so we'll, we'll go out together. Um, and then the other thing is, um, I had a quick CPP report, if there's time for it.
Sure, hold on, just came, uh.
Yeah, um, so, uh, Jamie, when you send out the, um, the DOE twenty-five, can you just do a quick, uh, how does that impact their tax rate? Quick, maybe a little one-liner in the email, because I know it gets buried in the report.
Absolutely, I'll show you where the fund balance is reported, and then, um, I won't have set the tax rate yet. That won't happen till around October twelfth. Um, when, when the DRA, yeah, when the DRA has a chance to look this over, and then when the state finalizes their stuff. But yeah, I can tell you where the fund balance number. But yeah, I can tell you where the fund balance numbers are because we'll also have to potentially come back and discuss retainage.
Okay, yeah. Never mind with my, I thought this was the October. Thank you.
Shirley.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I rarely give a CPP report, but I have one this time. The CPP is one of the many governing bodies at Hanover High School. And I am the school board representative to that body. And one thing that is important for the public to know. Is they are looking for a member of the public to be another member of the CPP. The current public members are myself and Bill Miles. And apparently we're supposed to have one more. So if you're interested, shoot me an email and I'll give you what information I have. And the meetings are Mondays from three ten till about four, not every Monday, but most Mondays. And Julie runs them and she runs a very tight meeting. We are usually done by four and I think last time we were done early. And they talk about things such as the best way to share information with students in terms of where the homework assignments are carried. What to do with free time during the day. It's just a, it's a good way to get to know a lot about the high school in a short period of time. So thanks.
CPP stands for what?
You know? Go ahead.
On policy and procedure.
Committee on Policy and Procedure.
Yes, thank you Julie.
Let's be clear, it's not actual policy committee.
No. Thank you. Any other comments? Moving on to, we have a number of hires we have to do in non-public. So for the people that are here, we're gonna. Going to non-public in the back corner. We'll hopefully back in about ten minutes and then wrap up. The public session approving the new hires. I'll just, if anyone wants to leave, they can. The next meeting for the Dresden School Board is scheduled for Tuesday. October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one here in the library. Yep.
All right. Do I just use the non-publics that we used during COVID to join you guys?
Um, I don't know if we have that set up for that. I don't think we're set up Lisa, I think you're off the hook.
Okay.
Does she want to be calling on the cell phone?
Actually, if you want to call my cell phone when you go to non-public, we can do that.
Perfect. I will, I will give you a call. Thank you.
So at this point, would someone like to make motion to move it in on public?
Move to enter the non-public session, RSA ninety-one dash eight one three two B C N O.
Nelson, yes.
Yeah. Well, yes. Yes, Johnson, yes.
Yes.
Right, we're moving into non-public. Thank you everyone.
I'm here, thanks.
Uh, Jamie, are you still here?
I see her. I mean, I, I see her.
Yep.
Uh, we've returned to public session. I'd like to have someone that moved to approve the hires. Ben?
Moved to approve hiring strings teacher, long-term substitutes, and FTE increases as presented.
Second, John? Yep.
Nelson, yes.
Yep.
Odelia, yes.
Odlia, yes.
Keeney, yes.
Oh, yes. Johnson, yes? I don't actually think I'm supposed to.
Hartman, yes.
I just realized I don't think I'm supposed to.
Yeah.
Ken, yes. Lisa?
Yes, Kristi, yes.
What's that?
Why tell the people who are members why not everyone votes?
Yeah, so Garrett is a not, a non-voting member for Dresden. But a voting member for Norwich, right?
And SOU.
And SOU.
I can vote to, uh.
So, uh, agenda topics for next meeting, if anyone has an item they want included, please just email me. I have the Norwich planning meeting tomorrow. Do you know when the Dresden planning meeting is? I'll find out. Uh, let's see. Remember Norwich? No, I'm sorry, Hanover. Hanover.
Yeah.
I used to live in Norwich.
Yeah, Wednesday's Hanover. Always trying to get back.
They didn't have sewers, so we need to cross the river.
They're the best neighbors.
Tomorrow at noon. Hanover's in the planning.
Yeah, and then.
Twelve.
Okay. So, uh, so as you can probably anticipate, at our Hanover meeting, uh, on the thirteenth, I believe it is. Uh, I'll be stepping down as the Hanover School Board Chair. So if someone would like to self-nominate or nominate someone else, please let me know. John's shaking his head yes. So, uh, so please send me any agenda topics for the Dresden meeting and I'll, I'll collect, if anyone has anything for Hanover until we officially step down, I'll, I'll, I'll take the meeting tomorrow. Um, at this point, Garrett, would you like to join the, uh, join the meeting? Trying to move to John, yeah, he closed my period, uh, eight forty-one, two. The second? Ken? Yep.
Nelson, yes.
Neil?
Odelia?
Odlia, yes.
Keeney, yes.
Oh, yes.
Lisa?
Kristi, yes.